Mr. Chair, I do have to go. My kids are waiting for me downstairs, so I wish the board luck in its future deliberations on this issue. Thank you.
Chris, are we seeing anybody?
Yeah, I just tried to promote Paul, then he disappeared.
Yeah, oh, he's, I see him now.
There he is, right there he is. I just, I don't see, I don't see Diane yet.
Is that Diane under Patrick Kennedy's?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Is that, oh, no, there she is.
There she is, I got her.
Yeah.
Just come on in.
Yeah, here comes Diane. You give me a second, I think someone set the alarm here. Hi Diane, we're waiting for Paul to unset or set an alarm or.
Yeah, I know, I know we're in public session. I, I'm not at home and I am gonna have to leave really soon.
Okay.
I don't have privileges where I'm at, so, but I will stay as long as I possibly can.
Sorry, one of my texts has set the alarm, so within about 10 minutes I'll be dragged out and arrested.
Okay. Welcome to, I'd like to bring the Friday, December 9th, 2022 Select Board meeting. We paused to go to executive session, we are out of executive session, so I am opening this and I just want to clarify a role of who is back from this. Jane?
Jane Healy-Dippel.
Diane?
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul?
Already present.
Okay, we have four of the, of the members, Select Board, Brady is not here.
Brady's here.
I mean.
Cory.
Yeah.
Cory, not here. Okay, we're in session, I want to remind everybody that this is on Zoom, it's being recorded. And if you wish to speak, you just have to raise your hand and we'll recognize you. This was read at the beginning of the meeting. Were, are there any public comments? Public comments are things not on the agenda, you can speak briefly, it will not be discussed, but it's an opportunity to speak. Is anybody here? Waiting for.
Nobody's raised their hand, Jack.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Citizen Petition Navigation Bylaw, discussion and vote on the recommendations for town meeting. I think the, the board has seen a version from Jane, I've seen a version from Paul Grady. Any discussion on that? Or Jane, you want to read yours? Do we have, Tracy, do we have the ability to put those up on the, for people at home to read?
I'm, I'm playing the role of Tracy tonight, so.
She wrote a lot better than you, Chris.
Yeah, she does, I'm kind of, I'm with you 100% on that, yes, but I also gave Jane, Jane can post stuff too, so.
Okay.
So, tell me what's easier.
Let me see.
Yeah, yeah, Diane, yes.
Yeah, just, just a procedural question, I, I didn't look at Paul's comments only because I, because it was something we had charged Jane with doing, I didn't, I wanted to have it in open session so that we, we could have a conversation, but I guess my question is whether, you know, when I, when I generally read Jane's statement, you know, is this something, I guess I want to understand the purpose of this, because I, when I looked at it, I, I thought about, you know, do we make some of the, the initial statements, the motion on recommending it, or is this, you know, it's, it's sort of an advocacy, advocacy piece and I want to understand sort of how we're using it, is it the motion? And then kind of the backup supporting the motion? So there's some general, like, what, what is this document for? What is this language for? And how will it be presented to the public? So I'd like to start off with that question before we kind of wordsmith what's in it.
Yeah, and I think the Paul's revision, as I read through, it seems to be just some relatively minor wordsmithing. Jane, do you want to address that question of Diane?
Yeah, to the extent that the board was inclined to recommend the Citizens Petition Article on the Navigation Bylaw, I think that this would be the statement that would reflect our position that would accompany that recommendation and that we would likely read it before we delivered our recommendation to town meeting, so everyone could understand the basis for the recommendation. That's all I'm envisioning.
Okay, Paul?
And just to piggyback on and explain to the town where their board, their elected board stands.
Okay. Why don't we put that up and then have somebody read it? Jane, why don't you read that?
Are you seeing my screen right now?
Yes.
Okay, would you like me to put up Paul's or mine?
Well, either both.
Is it Paul, what is the?
And I know Diane is on a tight timeline, so.
It, yeah, I mean, technically, since I, I think, I think we should have one version and then pull from there, discuss from there.
Okay, so here is Paul's. Um, let's start with Paul's. I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to make it bigger. So, here we go, okay, let's go line by line quickly, and I will read it, if someone wants to edit, stop me. So to preserve and protect the natural beauty and resource that is Cohasset Harbor, the Select Board supports the Citizen Petition Article and the efforts. I'm stopping myself, of all residents of Situate and Cohasset who have an interest in maintaining this wonderful gift for all to enjoy now and in the future. Cohasset is the epitome of a quintessential coastal New England town, and Cohasset Harbor is the crowning jewel in our community. To those, including the children who walk these harbor shores, sail, row, or motor upon waters, learn and practice the art of sailing, rowing, and navigation, play on its Outer Harbor beaches and flats, or simply enjoy the unadulterated vistas and natural beauty that is Cohasset Harbor. This board unequivocally stands with you in protecting this irreplaceable natural resource. We strongly feel that Cohasset Harbor is a gift that was given for all to enjoy and that we are only the stewards that were chosen to administer its inalterable preservation. As there, some, as there are some shared waters between Cohasset and Situate, it should be inherent upon both Cohasset and Situate to work together in order to pass this wonderful legacy on to future generations in the condition, if not better than that which we received it. The Navigation Bylaw is based upon an act that was passed in 1953, the petitioner for this act was Helen Scripture, who was the first woman ever elected as a select woman in Massachusetts. Ahead of her time in many things, Miss Scripture was also one of, if not the first public official to openly advocate and work towards the preservation of Cohasset Harbor, and we owe her memory, our thanks for what she did in seeing to its protection. During the 40s and well into the 50s, Cohasset residents spent significant sums to protect our harbor, including the purchase of Bassing's Beach and in dredging the harbor, including the areas of our harbor located in Situate Waters. These efforts spearheaded by select woman Scripture led to a marked increase of boating traffic for all, easier navigation, and access to the Outer Harbor areas, including the beach for all to enjoy. To preserve this asset to New England, Mrs. Scripture filed a petition for state legislation that was passed by the Commonwealth in 1953. At the 1953 Annual Spring Town Meeting, Cohasset adopted a bylaw to regulate and maintain those dredged areas, including waters bordered in Situate at Cohasset's sole expense, including maintenance, policing, and associated ancillary expenses. This ongoing project has been at no cost to Situate and has been in place for over 70 years, as well as in practice for centuries. The proposed bylaw in the Citizens Petition extends the scope of the original 1953 Act, all of which is under the authority of that original 1953 Act. Since its inception and prior to Cohasset. Since its inception, I'm just gonna put, since its inception, Cohasset has been the sole custodian, conservator, and protector of Cohasset Harbor, including hiring and paying staff, purchasing and maintaining the boats and equipment needed to maintain the safety, boat repair, ramp maintenance, and inventing in the breakwater on a need.
Investing, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, investing. Cohasset has always recognized the importance of safeguarding and preserving this harbor for all to come and enjoy. The fact that boaters, kayakers, canoeers, paddleboarders, children, and families from all over New England, and further, come to Cohasset Harbor to enjoy the haven and natural beauty of these waters is another key element to preserving it in its natural state. Since 1894, the Cohasset Yacht Club has been in existence to encourage yachting through the promotion of good fellowship among those interested in sailing, seamanship, and the pure enjoyment of the ocean and the beauty encompassed in its environment. Since 1960, the Cohasset Sailing Club has been a resource for children of all ages and incomes to learn the art of sailing and safe navigation. Cohasset Maritime Institute has been teaching children and adults to row since 1994, and the Cohasset Center for Student Coastal Research has been teaching children of all ages in the study of our local watershed marine environment and in the importance of their continued preservation and protection. Cohasset Harbor also plays host to many who choose to canoe and kayak among, along the coastlines of these shared waters, play in the flats, hunt for clams, learn to navigate small boats among the rocks, or to simply float along while gazing at the beauty surrounding them, or perhaps take a look at the estate affiliated with one of our founding fathers, the Blades. The Select Board is deeply attuned to the pleasures of our harbor of, to the pleasures our harbor has to offer, but we are also extremely cognizant of the safety concerns associated with the children, families, and people utilizing all aspects of what our harbor has to offer. We appreciate that is those same concerns that are the incredible efforts behind the Navigation Bylaw and the petition. Our residents and a significant number of Situate residents are sending a clear message, they want Cohasset. Are, I'm, I'm sorry, Paul?
Sending us, I should have put us, I apologize.
That's okay. Sending us a clear message, they want Cohasset Harbor protected and that it is a resource worth fighting to protect. We pledge to you that we will take those steps to protect this special place now and for the future. We hope that those steps will include continuing to reach out to Situate Select Board to reach an agreement that will continue to preserve Cohasset Harbor in its natural state, so that it continue to be a place that all can enjoy in perpetuity. We want to take all potential paths, whether through this bylaw or with an agreement with the Situate Select Board and its residents, to come to an understanding that protects and saves in perpetuity this wonderful New England gem of a harbor.
Thank you, Jane, I just want to, I believe that when Paul was doing that, he wanted to continue to use the first basically sentence in the, in the thing that you wrote, and that sentence says the Select, Select, no, above that, the Select Board supports the protection of Cohasset Harbor and, and the Citizen Petition's efforts and article.
I see.
I, I, I think that's, that was the first separate.
How about thus? To protect, to preserve and protect the natural beauty and resource that is Cohasset Harbor, the Select Board supports the Citizens Petition Article.
Right, and I don't know whether stylistically we wanted that in the beginning or of this.
How about the beginning and the end?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, one of the recommendations I made on, on yours, Jane, was basically to start off with, because we're gonna have to make a motion, whether it's tonight or Monday, that basically says the Select Board supports, you know, theoretically, that would be the motion, the protection of Cohasset Harbor, and thus recommends to town meeting the adoption And thus recommends to town meeting the adoption of article, whatever it is, and just like really just. Because that's the standard form for our, how we deliver our recommendations. The, the rest of the, the language, um. Is, you know, um, little hyperbolic in places, but but other than that, I think we all agree with it. Um, wholeheartedly support that, um, you know, this is, this is a gem and something we're interested in protecting. Um, so I, I, I look at it like we need to write upfront, say the motion, our, our recommendation of the, of the article and then go into the text. Um. And then could you go to the last paragraph because there was something on Jean's copy that I just wanted to make sure we were. Hang on one second.
I am, I'm not giving a hyperbole.
Yeah, Paul fleshed it up a little bit, which is fine.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm impressed, um. Yeah, okay, um, one of the things in in the original version just said something like we understand what. Um, the, the, the message from the residents at this meeting and I think. Paul changed the text so that I'm, I'm comfortable with what it says now because the previous said something about, it was, it was assuming. You knew what the meeting was saying before.
Oh, yeah.
Had the pleasure of a vote of the meeting, so.
Yeah, I got you, okay.
Okay, so, um. Does, I can, I was just wondering if we can. Do we need to put a split screen and put that off to the side or let's go back to our debating on this?
I guess before, I, I had to stop share, sharing, and so before I stop sharing, um, does anyone else? Want to make a comment, Jack, Paul, edit?
Yeah.
I try, I tried to read slowly, um, so that way.
No, I think. Yeah.
I, 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 I do again, just have a, a kind of a procedural question about. Whether. You know, we're going to vote. On this as an acceptable discussion, uh, discussion points for presentation at town meeting and or. Whether we're going to actually vote the recommendation tonight.
Um, well, but let's go back to debate once we. Get the regular screen back. So Jane, I think we can, okay, very good. Okay, um. The question that Diane is raising is, are we going to vote this kind of statement of principle, if you might, if you will? Separately. From voting in favor of this, and I think basically. We vote in favor of it and then we can vote to approve this and we can have separate votes and it's really it, whatever the. The, um. The board chooses to vote, I suspect that. Um, if we vote to approve. Or to support the amendment, then we'll probably vote to do that, but it's at the discretion of the select board, do people have thoughts? Uh, well, first of all, let's discuss, do we support this?
What, this language or the, or the, or the, the bylaw, that's what I'm, I'm, are we coming, are we having a discussion on? Whether we're going to recommend to town meeting. Article, whatever it is, um, sorry, I don't have the, the number in front of me, or, yeah.
Well, we can do both, I mean, I think we, we first of all. If we were to suppo- to support this, are people comfortable with this language? Would you support the language?
I would.
I would.
Diane?
I would support this language.
Okay.
I, 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 I have other concerns.
I, I know, assuming we vote this, so we'll get this out of, out of the way, everybody's comfortable with this language. Chair would, and, and I would support this language. Chair would suggest a motion along the lines of. If the select board, uh, the. Um, supports. The bylaw, then we support this as our bylaw position statement. Are people comfortable with that type of emotion and then we'll discuss whether we want to actually support the bylaw at this time?
I'm moved.
Seconded.
Okay, we've had a motion moved and seconded. To, um, approve the, um, language just read as our. Position, if, if we were to vote to support the bylaw. Uh, we have had a motion made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no discussion, further discussion, um, roll call vote, Jane?
Jean Haley Dipple, done.
Paul?
Already, I.
Diane?
Diane Kennedy, I.
Jack Creighton, I, this motion carries. Now on to what it is that we wish to do on voting to support the bylaw.
Recommend you.
Yeah.
Recommend to town meeting, I would move that we recommend the bylaw to town meeting.
I would second that.
Right. We've had a motion made and seconded to recommend this bylaw to town meeting. Um, is there? Discussion? Hearing no discussion.
Diane had her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Diane, did you?
Trying to figure out whether to hedge. I, 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 you know. I, you, you know what's coming, I, um. I'm not going to vote to recommend to town meeting this particular, um, uh, citizens petition article, I'm, I'm absolutely personally. Supportive of preserving, conserving, protecting and every, all the hyperbole that was in the letter we just read. Um, I feel. Because it is it actually a piece of legislation, I have some concerns that it hasn't gone through a thorough, full public vetting. Which every other bylaw for the, at least in my experience, has, has done. And, um, you know, and I would like to have some, um, some, uh. Appining from town council just in general to, uh, to understand the, the, uh. You know, to make sure that this is, is something that's consistent with law. I, I'll also tell you, I, I, I watch the advisory committee and typically. Um, when we vote on articles, especially something that's this substantive and this significant, as much as I agree with the idea of doing. Everything we possibly can to protect this area. Um, w- we always reach out to our advisory committee and ask for their recommendations first. Because they are supposed to advise us and town meeting. Um, as to, you know, whether something should be, should be passed, so. For me, I'm a little uncomfortable that we haven't had a full legal analysis and formal public hearings, um, and, and for that reason, I am going to, um. Vote not to recommend this article. Um, I really look forward to and I'm appreciative of all the work everybody's done on this board especially and, and in with the citizens group. To try to move this to some other kind of conclusion, but I'm just putting it out there. Um, you know, I, I obviously know the temperature of the community and, um, and the board and, um. You know, I look forward to robust discussion on Monday night.
Um, it's, I'm going to open it up to the public shortly, are there any other comments?
Do we have a motion, do we have a motion, Jack?
Uh, I think we have the motion on the floor, we're now in discussion. So we can have unlimited discussion until somebody calls, so select board dis- discussion on, on this. Diane, I mean.
Good.
Gee.
Two roses among the thorns, Jack, it's easy to get them mixed up.
Yeah, I know, it's tough being a thorn, but you know, when you're ornery, you're ornery, you can't change your stripes. Go ahead, Jean.
Sure, so. Um, just for edification from my standpoint. Um, we had had, we have had a number of executive sessions. And. That is because, um, we have been threatened with litigation by Situate, as everyone knows, and. Um. We have been diligently trying to protect the town while still. Addressing the bylaw petition before us. Um, we did have a public session. Where the select board asked me as their liaison to reach out with town council, including to meet with the citizens petitioners as appropriate. To determine what amendments, if any, were appropriate. In order to ensure the legal sufficiency, i.e. the AG's review that will be required. Within ninety days of the passage of this bylaw. I've done that extensively with counsel. And, um, I have not come back to the board with any suggested amendments. And so from my standpoint, I am more than comfortable and simultaneously, we have been, um. Moving forward, trying to move forward with Situate. Because we do earnestly want to make, to, to reach the goal. Of preservation within Cohasset Harbor. And a part of that has been reaching out and extending the olive branch to Situate to see if there was a way that we could come to an agreement and that. Olive branch is public, we sent it out in late November. Um, and asked Situate to, uh, take a pause on their permitting process so that way we could sit down together. And determine if, um. You know, there's possibility of. Coming to an agreement, Situate responded to us last night and a part, you know, of our back and forth are. You know, trying to see if we can work with Situate notwithstanding their threat of litigation, so. You know, we do have a lot of complications that I appreciate, sort of takes us out of the normal course of process with advisory and. I do wish that we, you know, candidly had gone through. The, the more normal processes that said, we're sort of dealing with the card, we, the hands we've been dealt. Um, to try to still. Be responsive to our citizens, protect the harbor, Cohat Situate appears to be moving forward with its permitting, but. We are still trying to engage with Situate. And like I said, we did receive a response from them, um, last night. And, um, you know, we'll, we'll continue to see if there is any resolution possible, but. Um, from my standpoint. I believe that the bylaw is one that we should continue to move forward with. In part to reach a resolution with Situate, because I do think that. Um, it will aid the town in its discussions and to, to reach a resolution. Which I, I think we could do with Situate in a productive way. Um, so that's, that's, that, that's, that's my standpoint, I think we could have the bylaw. Pass at town meeting and still continue to maintain discussions with Situate to see if we can hopefully. Reach a resolution and, um, go from there.
Well.
I fully support the vice chair's commentary and, um. I would add to that, I think it's a very important thing for Cohasset for our residents and I understand that some channels weren't follow the, the normal routine that again. Um, that's the hand we're playing and so. But also in dealing with Situate, I think it's important that the bylaw does pass. Because also that we do continue, I'm sorry, continue our conversations with Situate, I hope they're open to them. But also I stand fully in support of the people and the proponents of this bylaw and, and for the, uh. And for our town and our harbor.
Thank you, for people at home, uh, I'm, I'm going to give my, my opinion and then we're going to open that up, so if you're there. Make sure you raise your hand so we can see behind. That you want to speak and we will promote you under this. You know, my opinion is since Situate, I've been working on this, um. Since last winter. Um, you know, I've been to meetings in Situate on this, uh, contentious meetings, public meetings in Situate. Situate, um, select board meetings, um, several meetings with the Situate Select Board. Spent a number of, uh, uh, meetings with counsel. Um, we've asked that, you know, um. We're looking to ensure that the bylaw meets the requirements of a bylaw and it's not unconstitutional and. Fits in with that and, you know, perfectly satisfied that it does that, you can't take litigation risk out. Um, but you know, we've, we've looked at it, um. Situate's calling the tone here, they are moving forward and once those traps are in, even if it's only. You know, twenty or thirty in a corner, once they're in, they'll do nothing but, but spread. Um, we have to take a stand, it's not going away. And if we, if we keep delaying, Situate keeps moving forward and then we'll have a fait accompli and I can assure you. That once those traps are in there, this whole thrust of the maritime situation is they'll never come out and they will just expand. Um, the bylaw gives, um, town and Cohasset a very important tool. Because what we really want to do is work with Situate and get them to say it doesn't serve anybody's interests. It's what serves our interests is that whole area to become a nautical compass preserved for the use of Situate and. Cohasset and the citizens of Massachusetts for common use forever. That's what should happen here, but in anyway, in the interim. The citizens have spoken, an overwhelming number have signed this, overwhelming number are fully supported and there comes a time. When your elected leadership. Has got to step to the plate. We've got to be willing to say, yes, we are with you, yes, we will lead you, nothing's guaranteed. Battles are battles, but I firmly believe that it is time for this select board. To lead the town of Cohasset and support this, our citizens and support our environment, so I will, um. Vote to recommend this, um, Chris, is there anybody in the waiting room, uh, who'd like to speak?
Nobody's raised their hands, Jack.
Okay. Um. We have a motion to support this, been made and seconded. Um, is there any further discussion?
Can, I'm sorry. I don't know that we had, I don't know that we had a motion in a second on this, did we?
Oh, I, okay.
On the, just on the language from the document earlier.
Okay, well. Paul?
I'll make a motion that we put to a vote, uh, the support. Of, uh, bylaw.
Do we have a second?
I might have worded it incorrectly if I did.
Second, I thought I already made the motion, but I'm fine with it, yes.
Second, thirded, so.
All right, we have a motion second, second and thirded how many other times we want. Um, the, the motion before the, uh, select board is to support the citizens petition.
Recommend to town meeting the.
Recommend it, thank you.
Citizens petition article on navigation bylaw.
We can always count on Diane to make sure, good for you, thank you Diane, we have a motion made and, uh, seconded. To recommend a town meeting to support the citizens petition. Um. Is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion. Um. Roll call vote, um, Jean?
Jean Haley Dipple, done.
Paul?
Paul Brady, I.
Diane?
Nay.
Diane Kennedy, nay, Jack Creighton, I, motion carries three to one. Um. Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the garden club has, um, gifted a. A star to be put on top of the tree. Um, I'm not sure whether we really need to officially accept it, but, um, to the extent that we, we do. Um, we need to, uh, disc- discuss it, um. Discussion, I see Diane has her hand up.
Yeah, just this, this typically to, uh, gift acceptance is typically a, a vote, um, to accept it, do we, do we have a? A visual on it, because we had a, we had a, um, here, I'm going to be a process, um, jerk again, but we had a, um. A gift acceptance policy that was specific to some other things, it was more trees and benches and other things, but one of the, one of the goals of that. Policy that we adopted in twenty twenty-one was to, you know, to en- ensure that if people wanted to make a gift to the town. For any kind of accoutrements around the town, that they gave the town the money, uh, we ensured it for our role in accepting it. Would be to make sure that whatever was purchased was done in consistent with. You know, the aesthetics of the town or that it was in a place where. You know, we, we had access to or that was definite town property, that kind of thing, so I just want to put it out there, do we, have we seen the star? Or has it been purchased or are they giving us the funds to purchase it?
They have actually, uh, the garden club actually built the, the fund and it's been better, but Chris, you would know.
So, yeah, so a, a, a star. Uh, was, was delivered yesterday, our facilities guys took it, uh, they had to tweak it a bit to make it work outdoors safely. Uh, and so it's, it's all ready to go and, and its place will be. Its place will be providing you wrote it, uh, on the, the, the center tree on the pond, it's called, it'll look really nice and, and. Uh, it'll be sent, so it's all been, it's all been, we have it, it's been cleaned up and it's ready to go.
Again, just from a procedural's point of view, it would have been nice to get a picture of it or something, just so that we are doing our work.
Well, I think was donated a year ago, but something happened, I'm not sure we need to go into that and then. It was brought forward a, a week ago, but anyway, um, Paul?
I'd just like to make a motion that we thank the, the people from the Garden Club for the generous donation and for. Uh, Brian Joyce and the people at DPW and all the hard workers who decorated the common that we just put this to a vote.
I don't think you need a motion for that.
A motion.
You can just do that.
The thanks there, yeah, motion to accept the gift.
Yeah, second. Motion to accept, I would, I would say Diane, just to clarify, motion to accept the gift and put it on the tree and the common pond.
Second.
We had a motion to accept the tree and put it on this, accept the star, put it on the common tree. Um, made it seconded, is there any discussion? Chris, is there anybody in the audience?
Nobody's raising their hand.
All right, motion is made and seconded, um, is there any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, uh, roll call vote, starting with, uh, Paul?
Paul ready, I.
Jean?
Jean Haley Dippel die.
Diane?
Diane Kennedy, I.
Jack Creighton, I, motion carries. Thank you again to the Garden Club. I mean, it's, they do tremendous work around town and. You know, every time you turn around, there's something that they've really, they've really done something, um, there might be an urn with flowers. And this is another thing and it's so nice to have the Garden Club, thank you.
Jack, don't forget the DPW for getting that comment.
Oh, well, you know, I was.
Right, and Brian Joyce, who is our working group.
I was gonna ask you to do that.
And you too, Chris, you get a round of thanks as well.
Yeah, and, 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 and that's ba- basically to my point, you know, we, tha- that's why there is a process set up for these. To make these requests because it does impact our great, hardworking staff, so. But all good, also all that ends well.
Um. Do we, we have, uh, no topics, uh, within the forty-eight hour rule, um. Christine, if you have any comments?
Just to, just to put the, the, the star on the tree, uh, the, uh, uh, the, the lighting will take place tomorrow at five. Uh, there'll be a little parade, starting a little stroll from the village, girl soccer team's gonna be leading it, it'll proceed to the common pond. Uh, and then Jack, you'll speak, uh, Justin Schrill will emcee, I'm gonna be out of town, I'm afraid. Uh, so if anyone's available, please come on down, should be great, it'll look very nice and again, thank you, the facilities department did an awesome job at this, that's all part of the public works team. They had a lot of fun doing it.
Oh, I'm sure they did, we all love, uh, we all love Christmas in Cohasset, it's special and. Anybody who doesn't know, let's go down to this village stroll.
Is it safe to say we can make a motion or adjourn?
Yeah, it is safe to say and encourage.
Second.
Nope, Diane's got two fingers, that's, that's fourth, right, and we have a motion made and seconded, uh, to adjourn. So any discussion? Hearing no further discussion, uh, roll call vote, uh, Diane?
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul?
Paul ready, I.
Jean?
Jean Haley Dippel die.
Jack Creighton, I, we are adjourned, um. We are also, uh, remember, town meeting is Monday night, it's gonna be lots of fun, so make sure you show up.
Hey, Chris, on a really note, would you mind just blasting the critical details of town meeting on the town website, cause people were asking, they couldn't find it.
Yeah, so it was the top of the five things that went out tonight, we'll make sure it's prominently displayed, it's, uh.
Okay.
It's, uh, Monday, December twelfth, seven PM, Sullivan Gymnasium, that's in the back of the high school, uh, quorum's a hundred. Uh, please show up, look forward to seeing you there.
And remember, featured is the zoning bylaw. The navigation, excuse me, the navigation bylaw. So we expect that alone.
Have a good night, everyone.
Good night, all.
Thank you.